Three minutes. If you'd like to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members: Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Jamie Aldama of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District, Councilmember Ray Mounner of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of October 10th, 2023. This meeting is called to order. I am not going to call a roll call because everybody's here. Hope you take note of that. The next two items on our agenda is our invocation. The invocation is going to be delivered by Pastor Shannon Skinner of the Westside Church of God. And then if it's appropriate, gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat, if it's appropriate, if you'd remove it, if everyone would please stand for the invocation. And I'd ask if you'd please remain standing after the invocation for our Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Thank you, Mayor Wires, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. Please pray with me. Almighty God, Heavenly Father, Creator of all things, we thank you for this opportunity to be together tonight. We thank you for the opportunity to serve this great community. We acknowledge your sovereignty. We acknowledge your name above all things. You have created all things and you sustain us with your righteous hand. Your great love for us is unconditional and it knows no end. And we thank you for this privilege to be your servants. We pray your blessings tonight, Heavenly Father, for health and safety on all those who keep this great city moving, for those in the offices of leadership, for the first responders, for those who go unnoticed keeping the infrastructure and the food services and the parks and utilities all working, and those who keep the social health of the city active. We pray you will watch over them, and not just them, but also their families, Father, because we know that when those who step up to do the right thing, they will always come under a attack. And so we pray, Heavenly Father, in the name of your son, Jesus, that you would watch over them and sustain them, them and their families. We acknowledge your presence over all things. We recognize that when we honor you, your hand will be over us and on us. But we also recognize when we fail to seek you and your will, we can't count on your blessings to be on the people or on your city. And so we, we seek your wisdom and your guidance. Search our hearts tonight that we may know your will also, Father, that we may seek to do what is right by you, to love you as one of the two greatest commandments, to love you and to love others. And so we do this not for self-gain, but we do this to love our community and love the people of Glendale. Search us and know us. Let all that be said, Father, let it be done here tonight. May it be pleasing to you and honorable in accordance with your will. It's in your name, Jesus, we lift our hearts and our voices in this prayer. Amen.
Amen. Everyone, please remain standing, join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes from the September 26, 2023 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the September 26, 2023 minutes?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve the minutes of September 26, 2023 voting meeting.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, a second, Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's eyes have it, do you have it, that motion carries. Today, we're proclaiming October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Here today to accept the proclamation, we have Waste Management Senior District Manager Kerry Hook, Route Managers Justin Marshall and Jesus Reyes. Their generous contribution accelerated Glendale Police to bring awareness for Domestic Violence Month. If all of you would come up, I'm going to walk up there and we'll read your proclamation. Okay. Her son got accepted to Oregon State University. That's a big deal. Okay, so back to the proclamation. Stand this way. There you, just like that, just like, perfect, right there. Okay. Whereas the Bureau of Justice Statistics indicates that at least one in six homicide victims and nearly half of all female homicide victims nationally are killed by a current or former intimate partner. And whereas one in three women, one in four men in the United States have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner, as reported by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence. And whereas Glendale Police Family Violence Detectives investigated over 1,531 cases of domestic violence for the year of 2022. Whereas domestic violence impacts everyone regardless of race, sex, economic background, occupation, or religious beliefs. And whereas Glendale joins with others across the state of Arizona and nationwide in supporting domestic violent victims and survivors, the advocates and organizations who serve them and holding offenders accountable in the city of Glendale. And whereas each year, October provides an opportunity for all of us to recommit ourselves to support the development of healthy, respectful, nonviolent relationships, reducing the occurrence of domestic violence to prevent its harmful, long-lasting effects on our community. Now therefore, I, Jerry P. Wires, Mayor of the City of Glendale, Arizona, on behalf of our city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I call upon the citizens of Glendale to increase their understanding of domestic violence and be supportive of their family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers who may be a victim of domestic violence. Now that was signed by our Chief Clerk on the 10th day, October 23rd. So who's getting this? Okay, which one? Come on over here. Give that to you that way. Okay, did you want to say anything?
Sure.
Microphone's yours.
Okay. Thank you on behalf of Waste Management.
Come on up closer.
Thank you on behalf of Waste Management to the City of Glendale. We do serve our community day in and day out, and our truck drivers are the eyes and the ears for our community. And when they see something, they say something. So, thank you on behalf of Waste.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Ms. Hook. You guys have been phenomenal for us and we couldn't do what we do at the Advocacy Center by supplying suitcases and they've supplied some resources so we can buy cell phones for victims who are trying to get out of a domestic violence abusive situation. So I just wanted to thank everybody tonight, the mayor, vice mayor, and council members and our community. On behalf of the Glendale Family Advocacy Center, we thank you for the support as we band together with our communities to raise awareness about the far-reaching impact of domestic violence. We are grateful and honored to have businesses like Waste Management who join us to bring awareness to this topic that has probably affected every other person in this council chambers. Well, set up temporary council chambers. We stand united as we wear purple as a symbol of our unity to our cause to end domestic violence. Thank you for everybody who's wearing purple here tonight. You're a bunch of good-looking people. Appreciate you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda items three through 15. Items on the consent agenda are routine nature, but they've been previously studied by this council at a workshop session. Now they are intended to be acted upon in just one motion by this council. Do we have any speaker cards for any of the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items three through 15, please?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve consent agenda items three through eight, 11 through 13, and item 15.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second, Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the consent agenda items three through 15. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's eyes have it, do you have it, that motion carries. Moving on to consent resolutions. Ms. Bauer, would you read resolution item number 16 through 18 by number and title, please?
Item 16, resolution number R-23-79, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a grant pass-through agreement with the City of Phoenix, FAIN number AZ-2023-026-00, for the purpose of providing transit services. Item 17, resolution number R-23-80, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement between the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona and City of Glendale for dispersment of grant fund. Item 18, resolution number R-23-81, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a memorandum of understanding with the Arizona Department of Administration Technology regarding geospatial support services for NICS Generation 911 on behalf of the Glendale Police Department. That concludes the consent resolutions.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards for any of the consent resolutions?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve items 16 through 18 on the consent resolutions agenda?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve consent resolution items 16, 17, and 18. Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second, from the Vice Mayor to approve items 16 through 18 on the consent resolutions agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's eyes have it, do you have it, that motion carries unanimously. Moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 19?
Award of bid, RFP 24-07, authorizing to enter into a professional services agreement with Hirsch Holdings USA Limited for window screens. There are no speaker cards.
Thank you. Any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve item 19?
Yes, may I move we approve the professional services agreement with Hirsch Holdings USA Limited.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second, from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Mayor, I will explain my vote.
Go ahead.
As is my habit and practice, I will be voting no on this item and the other two bids and contracts on tonight's agenda. They do not allow, five-year contracts do not allow for continuity of oversight by city council. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor votes?
Uh, nay.
Vice Mayor votes nay. Chairman votes aye. The motion does pass. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 20?
Award of bid, RFP 24-19, authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Arizona HVAC Inc. for Glendale Homes Split System Heat Pump Replacement. There are no speaker cards.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve item 20?
Motion to approve item number 20, award of bid, RFP 24-19.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Oldama, a second, from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 21?
Authorization to enter into an experiential education partnership agreement with Maricopa County Community College District. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 21, please?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Community College District.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Turner, a second, from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Oldama, how do you vote?
I'm going to exclude myself from this vote. This organization happens to be my employer, so I'm going to recuse myself. Thank you.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. That motion does carry. Moving on to ordinances. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 22, please?
An ordinance number O-23-32, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Bethany Home Road between Cotton Lane and Arizona State Route 303 in the City of Glendale consisting of 1.69 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 246, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-33, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Glendale Avenue between Cervall Avenue and Alsup Avenue in the City of Glendale consisting of 3.89 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 247, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded.
Ms. Bauer, anytime you need to take a drink, you've got a lot of reading to do, so just pace yourself. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Ordinance number O-23-34, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Northern Avenue between Cotton Lane and Arizona State Route 303 in the City of Glendale consisting of 3.19 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 248, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-35, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Northern Avenue between Arizona State Route 303 and Reams Road in the City of Glendale consisting of 8.97 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 249, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-36, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Northern Avenue between 150th Avenue and Litchfield Road in the City of Glendale consisting of 8.97 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 250, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-37, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Northern Parkway between 133rd Avenue and 143rd Avenue in the City of Glendale consisting of 83.78 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 251, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-38, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Cervall Avenue between Olive Avenue and Peoria Avenue in the City of Glendale consisting of 11.02 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 252, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-39, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Cervall Avenue between Orangewood Avenue and Northern Parkway in the City of Glendale consisting of 8.67 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 253, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-40, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Reams Road between Olive Avenue and Peoria Avenue in the City of Glendale consisting of 7.68 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 254, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-41, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Reams Road between Myrtle Avenue and Orangewood Avenue in the City of Glendale consisting of one acre to be known as Annexation Area Number 255, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-42, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Litchfield Road between Bethany Home Road and Missouri Avenue in the City of Glendale consisting of .12 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 256, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-43, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on Glendale Avenue between 125th and 127th Avenues in the City of Glendale consisting of .96 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 257, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-44, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on 99th Avenue between Camelback Road and Bethany Home Road in the City of Glendale consisting of 3.57 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 258, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Ordinance number O-23-45, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, de-annexing certain right-of-way from the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments on Cotton Lane from Bethany Home Road to Glendale Avenue consisting of approximately 3.37 acres, providing for an effective date and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance. Ordinance number O-23-46, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, de-annexing certain right-of-way from the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments on Alsup Avenue between Ocatillo Road and Clermont Street consisting of approximately 1.42 acres, providing for an effective date and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance. Ordinance number O-23-47, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, de-annexing certain right-of-way from the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments on Olive Avenue between Arizona State Route 303 and 143rd Avenue consisting of approximately 38.76 acres, providing for an effective date and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance. Ordinance number O-23-48, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, de-annexing certain right-of-way from the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments on Olive Avenue between Citrus Road and 177th Avenue consisting of approximately 2.41 acres, providing for an effective date and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance. Ordinance number O-23-49, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, de-annexing certain right-of-way from the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments on Citrus Road and 175th Avenue at Zanhero Pass consisting of approximately 12.83 acres, providing for an effective date and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Bravo.
I missed that first part. Would you reread that? Any questions from the council? Okay, we need to do separate motions on all of the ordinances. Is there a motion on ordinance?
Excuse me, Mayor. I believe there's a presentation with this as well.
Yes. Mayor, here to answer any questions you might have is our Glendale Principal Engineer Jamie Chapin.
Okay. Push it out. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, and thank you, Ms. Bauer, Mayor and Council. This presentation will cover 13 annexations and five de-annexations of roadways in the western area of the city. And I'd like to point out that unlike a property annexation, the roadway or right-of-way annexations do not require a public hearing, so these votes will be for adoption tonight. The, as you know, the city has experienced rapid growth in the western area. And the, in conjunction with this growth, the city and Maricopa County have executed several IGAs related to roadways in the western area. The purpose of the IGAs is to designate roadway ownership to create equity and continuity of operations for both the city and the county. I'd just like to highlight three of the IGAs. The first one was executed in 2018, and this was a roadway swap where the county said that they would take over operation and maintenance of Alsup Avenue, and the city would take over operation and maintenance of 99th Avenue from Bethany Home Road to Camelback. And the reason why I wanted to highlight this one is because, as you will see in the master agreement, 99th Avenue is, falls outside of the area. So I just wanted to make sure it was clear where the authority for the annexation came from, and it is with this IGA from 2018. The second IGA was also a major IGA, and that is where the City of Glendale agreed to take over the operation and maintenance of Northern Parkway from Cervall Avenue to Dyce Art Road. And then finally, the main master agreement was for the exchange of roadways in the western area. This IGA incorporated all previous IGAs that were executed in the area and rolled everything into one document. This is the mass, the map from the master agreement so that you can see everything. The solid black lines would be City of Glendale roadways, and the, in the dashed lines would be Maricopa County-operated roadways. So you'll see that all of the annexations and de-annexations presented tonight and So you'll see that all of the annexations and de-annexations presented tonight and voted on follow this map. I also wanted to highlight one of the provisions of the master agreement, and that's that we could execute a letter of agreement between the city and the county, and this would allow for, where areas where, I'll give you an example of, like, we control, the City of Glendale controls Glendale Avenue, the county actually has a subdivision being developed on the south side of Glendale Avenue. There's currently thirty-three feet of right-of-way, the city requires sixty-five foot of right-of-way and the improvements. So the county has agreed that they would accept that right-of-way, and then the city would come back at a later date and annex the right-of-way into the city. So you'll see two annexations tonight that were executed under letters of agreement that followed the path outlined by the master IGA. And then finally, this is the map that summarizes the eighteen actions, so you see the, in blue, you have the annexation of roadway from the county into City of Glendale, and the red would be the de-annexations, that roadways that are currently in Glendale jurisdiction being de-annexed to Maricopa County. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Chapin. So is this a net, a net gain, a net loss of miles of roadway, or is it an even exchange? Or how, are we getting, what's the net as far as the miles of roadway the City of Glendale is responsible for?
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachoff, the, the goal was to have equity. So that was actually outlined in that master IGA. I do, so the presentation tonight was really just for the annexation and de-annexation. I believe Tony Abbo is here from.
I see him.
Okay, so, Tony, do you want to add, or?
You can't hide from us.
Mayor, council members, we were, in the western area, we were going to be getting, you know, fifteen miles, but we were going to give up, you know, a certain mileage. I don't remember the exact number, because those, as Ms. Chapin had indicated, those were all included in the agreement that we brought forth the last time around, but I know the, the overall mileage and the, and, and what we call the new frontier was going to be about fifteen point three miles that we were going to be taking in.
I'm sorry, fifteen or fifty?
Fifteen, one five.
Fifteen more miles of roadway that we're responsible for.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question.
Any other questions? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve item twenty-two, ordinance twenty-three thirty-two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, second from the vice mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on a motion? Mr. Attorney, that, that motion was, was fine, yes?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, with that said, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Can I get a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash three-three, the second of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Yes, Mayor, I move to re-approve ordinance O Twenty Three Thirty Three.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Can I get a motion for ordinance number zero-two-three dash three-four, the third of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number O Two Three Dash Three Four.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from the vice mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries. Can I get a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash three-five, the fourth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number O Two Three Dash Three Five.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from the vice mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries. Can I get a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash three-six, the fifth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number O Two Three Dash Three Six.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from the vice mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash three-seven, the sixth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number O Two Three Dash Three Seven.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from the vice mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries unanimously. Is there a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash three-eight, the seventh of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve ordinance number O Two Three Dash Three Eight.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from the vice mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion? Can I get a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash three-nine, the eighth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve ordinance number O Two Three Dash Three Nine.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from the vice mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on a motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash four-oh, the ninth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve ordinance number O Two Three Dash Four Zero.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from the vice to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash four-one, the tenth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve ordinance number O Two Three Dash Four One.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from the vice mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries unanimously. Can I get a motion for ordinance zero-two-three dash four-two, the eleventh of eighteen for item twenty-two?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number O Two Three Dash Four Two.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on a motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash four-three, the twelfth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Move we adopt ordinance O Two Three Dash Four Three.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Tomachoff, second by Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries also unanimously. Can I get a motion for ordinance number zero-two-three dash four-four, the thirteenth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number O Two Three Dash Four Four.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries unanimously. Could I get a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash four-five, the fourteenth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Uh, yes, I move we adopt ordinance number O Two Three Dash Four Five.
Second.
I have a council, motion by Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries unanimously. Can I get a motion for ordinance zero-two-three dash four-six, the fifteenth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Motion to approve item number zero-two-three dash four-six.
Second.
Ordinance.
I, I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash four-seven, sixteenth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Motion to approve ordinance number zero-two-three dash four-seven.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries also unanimously. Can I get a motion on ordinance zero-two-three dash four-eight, the seventeenth of eighteen votes for item twenty-two?
Motion to approve ordinance number zero-two-three dash four-eight.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that also carries unanimously. Could I get a motion for ordinance zero-two-three dash four-nine, the eighteenth of eighteen votes on item twenty-two?
Motion to approve ordinance number zero-two-three dash four-nine.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item twenty-three?
This is what most people are waiting for. Appointment of Jack Pritt to city judge.
Mayor, members of the council, he'll provide staff report this evening on the next two items. It's Jim Brown, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, and good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this is a request for the council to consider and take, take action on the appointment of Jack Pritt to a two-year term as city judge. The effective appointment date will be October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion on item twenty-three?
Sorry. I, I move that we appoint Jack Pritt as city judge.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Mellner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Yeah, explain my vote.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my comments are not to be reflected upon, uh, the judge, uh, Jack Pritt. Um, I will be voting no on this item, uh, for Mr. Pritt's appointment, uh, simply because the mayor and the council excluded the Judicial Selection Advisory Board, and otherwise known as JSAP, as a process of using the subject matter experts to help us, uh, decide who our next judge will be. Uh, it's a process that was absent for the presiding judge and, and one vote that I took that I regret today. And so I will be voting no.
Councilmember Eldama votes no. Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Mellner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I do not disagree with Councilmember Eldama, and I appreciate that he had the, uh, courage to bring forward his concerns, and, uh, now that they've been aired, I will vote aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner votes aye, Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Pritt. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item twenty-four? Well, we got plenty of time for clapping later.
Appointment of Eartha Washington to city judge.
We'll, we'll do that when we're done, folks, I promise.
Well, uh, Mayor and council, this is a request for the council to consider and take action on the appointment of Eartha Washington to a two-year term as city judge. The effective date will be October sixteen, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move we appoint the appointment of Eartha Washington to city judge.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Explain my vote, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, again, uh, my comments are not, um, uh, aimed at Ms. Washington. Uh, rather, they are aimed to the lack of process of using the, uh, Judicial Selection Advisory Committee as part of the hiring process, uh, one that the mayor and the council, uh, declined to use. Um, and, uh, again, uh, I did vote, just to be clear and on the record, for the presiding judge, and it's one vote that I regret, and it did not also have the, uh, Judicial Selection Advisory Board, uh, committee as part of the hiring process, I vote nay.
Councilmember Eldama votes no. Councilmember Hugh, how did you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Mellner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm gonna explain my vote. I, uh, wholeheartedly endorse both of the two judges that were, uh, electing tonight. Uh, I think you're both more than qualified. Uh, the comment made earlier about myself and the council electing not to use a particular board, that's true. But we made that decision a couple of years ago not to use that board. That was a joint decision that we made, and we carried out with the decision that we made. We have two great judges, I think they're gonna be fantastic. Uh, I have all the confidence in a world of their abilities. So, I'm not gonna let my personal feelings get in the way of good quality people. So, with that, I vote aye, the motion does carry. Congratulations to both of you. Uh, Judge... Hold on, we're not here yet. I'm gonna ask Judge, uh, DiPiazza if he would, uh, come up to the podium, and I'd ask the two, uh, new judges to come up. And do you wanna do them separately or together? I think s- separately, yes. Okay. So, uh... Judge DiPiazza, it's up to you, sir. Now it's time. If you'd both turn around, they'll take pictures of you there. Okay, would ask, uh, Eartha Washington, please come up. Do you have anybody you'd like to stand with you and bring them up with you?
Please raise your... Repeat after me. I, your name?
I, Eartha Washington.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duty.
Of judge of the Glendale City Court.
Uh, excuse me, as judge of the Glendale City Court.
Maricopa County.
Maricopa County.
State of Arizona.
State of Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me God.
To help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. May I say a few words?
Sure.
I appreciate that. First, I just wanted to thank you all. Uh, it was a wonderful interview, and then you listened to my experience, and you made a decision to hire me. So, I do appreciate that. It probably was one of the easiest experiences and one of the easiest interviews. So, I wanted to appreciate all of the council members and the mayor for deciding to appoint me as a judge. I wanted to thank my family who's present. My brother Robert came in from Williamsburg, Virginia. He's a battalion chief there, and he came, uh, just for a few days in order to see me get appointed. My brother Christopher, my sister Bernadette are present, and all of my friends from the courts. Uh, my pastor from Vineyard Church and his wife Thor are present. So, I wanted to appreciate all of who came, and thank you. I wanted to continue to be a judicial officer, and working here at the Glendale City Court, three miles from home, gives me the opportunity to do that, so I appreciate that, and I won't take it lightly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judge Pritt, I'll give you the opportunity if you'd like. Uh, I'll give you the opportunity if you'd like.
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I want to thank you for this opportunity, I really do. Um, as a, as an attorney, practicing out of mainly Penal County for twenty years, um, I think that has definitely prepared me for this role. I've seen it all, I've done it all, and, um, I'm gonna do the best job that I can for you. And I promise you that you will not regret your decision. I'll make sure of that. And I want to show you I was able to get it. So, I think we're good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we're, we're winding down here. Uh, next thing is council comments and suggestions. We'll start with Councilmember Eldama. Councilmember Hugh.
Forgot my mic was off. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I enjoyed, uh, Councilmember Clark had a meeting last night with her district. It was, uh, a very nice time, and a lot of good questions were asked. And for Cactus residents, um, October eighteenth, I will be having my district meeting at Manistee Ranch at five o'clock. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Mellner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Anything tonight, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Eldama, did you have anything to say? Councilmember Turner?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, two, two items, Mayor. As Councilmember Hugh indicated last night, I had my district meeting. Little did I know that I was going against a Diamondbacks game and Monday Night Football. Against those odds, you don't stand much of a chance of drawing a crowd. However, we had nearly fifty people there, and I do appreciate their attendance. And I also want to call out the three staff personnel who made presentations, because they were all very, very good presentations. Uh, Vicky Rios, thank you, she did the bond presentation. Jesse Peterson, our new Director of Economic Development, did a presentation on Vi and dispelled some of the myths that had been circulated about Vi recently. And then certainly least, last but not least, Eddie Garcia, our city architect. Uh, he gave a presentation on the City Hall renovation, and when the folks saw that, those renderings, I guess they hadn't seen them before because they went, wow! So, they really approved of what the concept of City Hall could look like. And lastly, Mr. Garcia presented on the Hero Sports Fields and made a promise that they'll be done by the end of twenty-twenty-four. So, I am very, very pleased with our meeting last night. Secondly, I want to congratulate Judge Pritt and Judge Washington. This council could not have chosen two finer judges. We had a pool of probably twenty or thirty candidates, most of which were qualified for the position. Some of it had been Superior Court judges, uh, some had worked administratively for the Superior Court, all had the requisite judicial experience, and these two people rose to the top almost immediately. I don't think we need JSAP to tell us how to pick our judges. I think that using common sense and asking the right questions, you always get to the cream of the crop, and that's what we did this time. So, congratulations to Judge Pitt, Judge Washington. I am very glad to have you on board. Thank you.
Okay, and then, uh, I simply want to remind everybody, Saturday morning at the Arizona Christian University, which is Greenway and Fifty-Ninth Avenue, uh, starting promptly at seven forty-five, we will have a flagline opening ceremony, uh, for, uh, my tenth annual Stand Up For Veterans. If you are a veteran yourself, please come. If you know a veteran, get them and bring them. Uh, maybe you're a veteran and you, and you think your life is perfect and couldn't be better. Well, you know what? Come on down anyway, I'll buy you a hamburger. Uh, what we want to do is we want to make sure that everybody that has ever signed that line saying that they would give their life for this country if that's what it took, that we're gonna honor them for the rest of their life. We're gonna make sure that our veterans are taken care of. So, please, mark that on your calendar. Uh, this is not for non-veterans unless you're bringing a veteran with you. Uh, if you're a non-veteran and you want to come down and help us as a volunteer, I'll, I'll take your help. We could use some help. Uh, but we probably will have somewhere in, in excess of, uh, probably three thousand people. It's a big event, the tenth annual, and each year it continues to get bigger and better. Uh, with that, uh, I also want to congratulate both of the judges. I, uh, you know, I was sitting here thinking about this, and, uh, today you joined a family. Uh, you have your own family, obviously. Uh, one of you has a really big family, I can see that in the audience. But, uh, you joined a new family. You joined people that, uh, quite honestly, uh, I would say the, the vast, vast majority of everybody that works for the city of Glendale, uh, has become a, a big part of a family that, uh, every, everybody is concerned about doing what our job is, and that's servant leaders, serving the people that, that put us in office. We, we work for our citizens, and, uh, and so, uh, you're gonna be making some tough decisions as you had in the past, but, uh, you'll also be making decisions that will change people's life, hopefully for the better. So, uh, Godspeed to you. Uh, thank you, congratulations, and I wish you the very best. Uh, with that, next on our agenda is our citizens' comments. Council makes the opportunity available to citizens to bring information and business before the council that's not on the printed agenda. I've got two speakers tonight, Robert Cruz, you're up first. Uh, I'll remind everybody that, uh, you have three minutes to speak. There's a timer on the podium in front of you. When that red light goes on, your time's up. Uh, I would ask you to, if you know the district you live in, just tell us the district. If it happens to be in Glendale, but it's not Glendale, tell us the city you're from. I do not need your physical address, and state your name for the record, if you would, please. You have three minutes, sir, go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Robert Cruz, and I'm from the Yucca District. I'm here again to voice my concerns about question one. The more I dig into this issue, the more I'm convinced that there's some kind of bait and switch going on, and the residents are being lied to. Arizona Revised Statute thirty-five four fifty-five D states, "The governing body or board may expend the monies received from the state for the sale of bonds only for the purposes stated in the ballot, and for the necessary costs and expenses of the issuance of the sale of the bonds." Question two, by contrast, is specific and has actual data-driven metrics as to why first responders need money. That doesn't seem to be the case with question one. The information meeting I attended even had Counselor Eldama on stage saying that the list of roads in the bond measure pamphlet are just examples of what projects and money could be used on, not an actual list. This is not what the ARS intends, in my opinion. I have several questions that still have not been answered. Why are we asking for the money? Have you overspent? Why isn't there a specific project list for the bond measure, and what are the metrics that you're using? It's like the residents are being told, "Give us this money, and we as the council will decide how to spend it and tell you later." I'm not even going, I'm not even gonna go into the fact that the bond defaults are on an all-time high in the U.S. right now. The council needs to do a better job in informing the public. I'm left with only one choice, and that's to vote no on question one. I can only hope others see what I see. Thank you.